For the first meeting in April. So we'll call a work session to order and our first item of business for us is going to be a presentation by the, well, let's see, the GTR Link, I guess we'll say that? Yes, we have Betsy Young, we have Matt Dowell from the airport, and we have our airport board representative, Mr. Frank Childs, and they're going to give the board a presentation on the proposed purchase of 109 acres, plus or minus, I believe it is, out at the airport to further enhance our industrial opportunities for the Link and for that area, so.
Which way do you want to go?
Well, actually, that's fine, you can put them right back there if you want to.
Here, I'll make an exception.
No, 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 it's fine, it doesn't, thank you ma'am. It's all good. We'll have some extras, okay? We'll pass around some others for those who are curious or interested.
Good morning, hey y'all, for having us here today. I'm Betsy Young, I'm the Vice President of Economic Development with the Golden Triangle Development League, and I am here with Matt Dowell, Airport Director, and Mr. Frank Childs, who is y'all's representative on the GTRA Airport Board. So what we are looking at today is, the airport is where there's some land that has been available for quite some time, and that we, and we feel like now is the time that the purchase needs to be made. If you're looking at this map with the airport here, this is the entire Golden Triangle industrial part, and the land that we're talking about is right here, and it is, it's on Airport Road, you can see a little blown up over here, we're on Airport Road, and so there are two different parcels of land when you're looking at it, and if you look at what's in green, the airport already owns that land. They have secured a $1 million FAA grant, and that is going to be what's in the purple area to be purchased with that. What is in red, we are asking for the communities who own the airport, which would be Starkville, Actonville County, Columbus, Lowndes County, West Pointe, Clay County, and jointly y'all all own, you know, a portion of the airport, we are asking for y'all to help to purchase, to secure a loan through the airport and purchase that land. On the sheet in front of you, and then also on this board, and we've got the sale price for the land, a little long here, but we'll work with it.
Okay, it's all right, we can do it.
So this is based on, currently, we have a land price of a little over $18,000 per acre. Based on what all of the land around the airport has sold for in the last several years, it's gone between 20 and 25,000 an acre, so we feel like this is a good, a good price that we've gotten. So on the shares, Starkville owns 20% of the airport, we had modeled a 6% conventional loan, we initially thought we were going to be able to get an NDA loan at 1%, and the NDA came back and said they really did not want to use that program to, for land purchases, and that was really more for improvement. So there are a number of things that the airport has used up for in the past and could use it for in the future, but that does not exist. So they are pursuing a conventional loan, looking, and we modeled it at 6%, we think that's a decent and conservative estimate, which within, over a 10-year period, puts Starkville's share at $30,000 a year. In the terms of economic development, if the importance of this land, we are, we'll go back to this, the airport's pretty landlocked, so we have Boeing, Aurora, Airbus, and Stark Aerospace, all that are, you know, in the airport manufacturing industries, Boeing and Airbus are the two largest airport manufacturers in the world. They do each have a little bit of land around them, but not a lot, all three companies are actually in the middle of expansion projects currently, so we want to give them that, give them that little space to grow, but also, other than that, the airport's pretty landlocked. This 2,200 acres was available until Aluminum Dynamics started, they took that 2,200 acres, so this is really all that's left for airport development.
109, the red, or is it 109 of red and the purple?
Red and purple.
Red and purple, it's 109. So this, this is the only land that would be available, also what it does is, you know, when the, when the airport owns land, they don't gift this land or sell this land, they are leasing this land out, so it is a revenue generator for the airport. And this, again, it had been available for a bit, there was another purchaser interested recently, which is really kind of what spurred Matt and Joe to go, okay, now's the time. They had negotiated to buy it from him at a higher price than that $18,000, he fell out thankfully, but there was talks of, let's put some warehouses on it, let's put some migrant housing on it, it's not really what you want to see when you're flying into the airport with all that development around, so that really just kind of spurred the, hey, we need to go ahead and do this, so.
What's currently sitting on the purple piece there, that you can see there, Matt? What is that?
There's a little bit of farmland right around here, all of it's farmland right now, but there's, well, no, right here is actually just, there are tractors and other equipment, there's a farmer's location right here, a little carve-out for his equipment, and Matt Burgnack, if you've heard of him before, he does a lot of farming in that area.
So that's going to stay carved out?
It's carved out for now, so it's not part of this purchase agreement. We already own, as Betsy kind of mentioned, the 35 here, so we are literally adjacent to existing airport-owned land, and there's a lot of opportunity in this land, obviously we talked a lot about the other developments that are out here, but we have rail down here, which is a huge thing, there's intermodal in Huntsville, for example, so connecting roads, rails, airports together, and that's an opportunity and a strategic piece of property, something that we don't currently have, and then you can see the proximity to the runway. So the idea is, obviously, the federal grants come with even more regs, so trying to keep that close to the airport, and then will be purchased by the communities farther and closer to the existing access roads for other types of development.
So we already own the green?
Correct, still owned by the airport.
So this should be allowed to be some contiguous ownership?
Exactly. This is almost kind of like a little island, and so trying to take over the island now that there's not a crossing runway, there's a parallel runway, since Aluminum Dynamics swapped some land with us, so the remaining portion over here is already taken up with a cross, with a parallel instead of a crossing, which now creates the opportunity to develop this land.
Who owns that?
Right here. It's the Rob family, the same ones that are, we're actually purchasing from, it's just they wanted a higher purchase price, so around $40,000, so that was not part of this deal.
They're already got a deal on that?
Correct, yeah, but at some point, obviously, we'll own all of this, and as part of a bigger development, or maybe future negotiations, we hope to actually purchase that as well.
And if you look right here, you'll see like a little strip that gets wider just along Airport Road, and that is owned by Lowndes County, and they have retained that to give access to Airport Road, so once the airport attains this property, the thought would be to get that from Lowndes County, so that it does give access to Airport Road, but in the end, there was something given on that was not really, you know, conducive to the industry around there, they did kind of just want to have that buffer.
Well, they actually were the only 25% of whatever it was if we were to get it from them, so.
Correct.
It is my understanding that that sliver of land that Lowndes County owned was purchased with the thought of protecting the property to the west, because if you have access to Airport Road there, you don't have access to the, you don't have access to the property we're talking about, so they have protected that access and egress to that property, since the ownership of that is transferred from the conventional owner to the county.
Okay, and I assume the airport board, Mr. Frank, is all on board with this, obviously?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, any question, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Mayor, let me just make a few comments, so, good morning, Mayor and colleagues. Mayor, this is one of the primary reasons I'm here today, and I want to thank Eve for your leadership and bring this matter, it's a very important matter, the public needs to be tuned in to this matter. I want to thank the mayor, the, our representative Frank Childs, who's done a superior job with the airport board, I want to thank the director, and this is a win-win situation for us, the price for acres is really a cheap price, and it is a very reasonable price, it may seem expensive to a lot of people, they're residential properties, they're more expensive, $18,000, $25,000 acre. This is prime land near and after work, and great thinking, great movement, we want to get this land so we can control our destiny, we want to control our environment. The airport board is making great prize with the westbound flight to Dallas, and this is a very premier opportunity, and our match is just 20%, $3,000 a year, 10 years, interest rate 6%. The staff has obviously done its very thorough research, the economic development officials say that they do not want to use the lower interest rate, but we have to get what's available. Certainly, this is a great move, and the best move, do not want this spot to use for the other foreseeable intended purpose. I remember when this came to the board years ago about the airport itself, and, and, well, the public wants to know, why is the city of Starkville giving this tight financial involvement with other matters, and why are we interested? Well, we are interested for this reason. This investment for 30,000 dollars a year, for 10 years, it is going to enhance economic development, business growth, and it's going to bring economic prosperity into this area. The more flights we're getting, the greater the business opportunity. We have the largest university in the state of Mississippi, Mississippi State University, the people come to our university, come to our city, they spend money, they're going to buy homes, so we don't lose with that, this is just an investment for the future. I'm taking the time to say this, not to prolong this session, because when the mayor mentioned to me, and I have this call like this, I'm not prolonging this meeting, but this is an important agenda, and the public, hopefully, the Starkville Dispatch will have a headline in the morning, the Starkville Diesel will have a headline, because this is major need, and we're controlling the destiny, we're going to expand the airport, and 20% for our city, 20% match for the county, that's 40, City Columbus 25, Lowndes County 25, we're at 90, West Pointe 5%, and Clay County gives 100%, so this is fair, this is equitable, and, and Mr. Childs, we appreciate your work, your experience, your worth of knowledge, your leadership, and your working with all of the team person, and I want to go ahead and thank this board in advance, and that's, and that's what drove me here to this session today. With the mayor mentioning that you're going to be here today, Mr. Childs, and your team, this is important, this is a big day for us, we want to get, we want to get that warrant to be, so we, we know what's going to be after 109 acres, it's going to belong to the Golden Triangle Development Board, not the other foreseeable intended use, and that's going to help us in years to come, even beyond our term, even with the Vice Mayor on the buddy chair, there's no law on the board.
That's going to be a while, the Vice Mayor.
That's right, so, but I just wanted to take the time, and things like this, we have to, I know we normally get in and out, but this is a subject matter, Mr. Attorney, we just have to take the time and talk about, and sleep about, you know, and this is a very top issue for our city, and I just want to commend you, Mayor, for thanks for the leadership, Mr. Director, thank you for your coming to Starkville, great place to be, your staff, and Mr. Childs, thank you for your leadership.
May I say something?
You're on the floor, Mayor, go ahead, thank you.
Mr. Childs, yes?
May I say something?
Yes, sir.
One of the things that our leading industry has is the fact that they recruit students out of Texas. We're going to be within an hour and a half or less from the area of Texas, Dallas Fort Worth Airport, because there is a lot of students in that area there that we're recruiting. Currently, they would have to fly from Dallas Fort Worth to the Jackson Airport, take a motor vehicle up here, and you're talking about two hours up this way. It makes it easier for the students, it makes it easier for the parents, it makes it easier for everyone traveling west on this thing, but as Alderman Perkins mentioned about economic development, airports are economic developments in every way. You know, 100 years ago, we had, the biggest thing we had going were railroads, and that was economic development, but this is really economic development, and you can see around the airport, the development, all you got to do is drive up and drive toward the airport, look west, you see Aluminum Dynamics on the horizon over there. This is a big time thing for us here in Starkville and Actonville County, and the Golden Triangle. I thank you for allowing it to come to you, talk about this.
Thank you, Mr. Childs, and, and obviously, you know, we have benefited hugely from the, being a partnership with this, and with all that has happened out at the airport, from Steel Dynamics to Aluminum Dynamics, Pack Car, all of those out there have, and have created a benefit to the city in multiple ways, so, yeah, we're very fortunate and we appreciate it, Matt, appreciate you and Betsy, you guys, so, thank you. I think I saw Kim's hand first.
I just want to clarify on the interest rate, because on what they presented has six, but on ours, it's five.
It's just projected, right now, they don't run it. And that was my fault, because I did that cover sheet, and I thought it was going to be projected at five, but you're projecting it at six, and that's their conservative number, but they still haven't negotiated, so it might actually be less than that, so.
It could be, let's say what, we're expecting on that $30,000, really expecting that to be no more than $30,000, and hopefully, with some other, still pursuing some other grants and opportunities, hopefully that could be lower.
Again, I was the one who did the cover sheet, and I didn't realize it was at six, but it's, it was still a fluctuating number, so, yes, ma'am.
And my question is similar, you mentioned that there would be potentially revenue-producing opportunities for that piece of property, how would that impact our annual payments? Would you net that against the loan and then adjust our payment down?
Potentially, yes, now, it depends on what the future development is on that property, but for example, if there was revenue generated, that could help out, pay down the loan as well, for future, but right now, we don't know at what point that will be developed.
10 years is a long time.
Correct.
We're not very long, actually, when you think about it. All right, any other questions? None? All right, guys, thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure having you. Has anyone taken this up yet, or are we the first?
So Clay County approved it on Monday morning, and then we'll be here in Columbus on Tuesday night, Lowndes County, Actonville County, and West Pointe the following week.
Okay, all right, well, you see if we can congregate consent in item four, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, nope, okay.
The ma'am. Just move the handle.
Okay, that's okay, take it off. All right, with that, we can move on to our, we can move on to our agenda. And that being said, we have two sets of minutes, Mr. Huskisson, we're all good with those? Okay, all right, Ms. Harden, you too? I assume so, all right, consent for those?
I see.
Okay. I don't have any comments, I guess of all the comments, I'll say, is it at 5:30 on Tuesday, that there's an hour and a half left? Well, I was going to say, there's an hour and a half left to vote, so we'll, we can do that, but beyond that, I don't know of anything, and we don't have any introductions, so we are, you know, streamlining this particular thing, so Ms. Harden can handle the voting and all that sort of business, and while I'm talking about it, we are going to be up here, so we will be up here for our Tuesday meeting, because the voting will be down in the boardroom, so. All right, and then we have one public hearing, which is going to be a lot mowing, and that's going through our, it's grass growing season, it'll be going through our process of the, of the quick mowing opportunity for us to take care of those matters, as we took care of them last year, through that process. Then under Mayor's Business, this is the resolution, and Alderman Siskel says she's not going to let it go on consent, although I think it's very consent-worthy.
Well, it possibly is, but there are three very important votes who are not here today, so we'll leave it off consent, if you don't mind.
Okay, no, it's, it's a, it's a good deal, but yes, I understand. Then we have a resolution, and this is a resolution requesting funding, this is exactly the same resolution, except for the date, that we passed last year for this funding, this is Congressman Gess funding for the wastewater treatment plant, he is not taking any 2026 new funding measures, he is only considering what was not funded, and we were not funded last year, so we've done this before, it's the same dance, it's just a different date on the resolution, so I'm going to, I'm going to ask for consent on that one, too. Can I get that one? Okay. Alderman Vaughn, you good with that? All right, thank you. All right, the airport is, oh, Rusty's here, if there's any question, this is a multimodal grant for a number of things, concrete rehab, it's a 5% match, and our portion will be $4,805.50, which seems to be quite reasonable for that size of grant, so, consent for that one? All righty. Then under engineering, we have a TA grant funds for the $1.1 million that, I believe I mentioned that to y'all when I first talked to Commissioner Caldwell a number of months ago, when he told me about it, so this is that TA that we applied for, so, consent for that one? Okay. Then claims docket, which we will skip over, fire department, this is a 100% reimbursable grant, Chief, you're, you're all good with that?
Yes, ma'am.
And we're managing that one ourselves, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you, sir. Consent for that one?
Consent.
All right, and then HR, Mr. Ashford, anything about these? These are all the?
They are replacements.
All replacement? Okay, all right, thank you. Consent for those?
Consent.
Okay. And then parks, we have Springer Engineering, this is going to be testing for us to put that culvert in at JL King, so obviously, we need to get that going, and we've got the funding set aside for that, and we'll look forward to getting that done, and maybe we'll still keep our fingers crossed for some potential funding from the state, if that's possible, so consent for that one? Thank you. And then we have a 48-month lease for this real mower, this is the one that is going to take care of the baseball fields at at Cornerstone, it's a very specialized, Doug, you want to talk about the specialized nature of this particular mower?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor, it is one that really helps us manicure the, the grass part of the building at Cornerstone, it really helps us take the beautification of Cornerstone to the next level, but also, it's, again, just being able to help manicure and cut and.
Well, it's not just for beautification, right? It's supposed to help, it makes it healthier.
It is, it's a lot, obviously, we're using the zero turns now, and it actually is somewhat damaging the, the sirtz in the grass, which is causing more chemicals and that type of stuff to keep it up, this mower actually cutting across the top instead of the spinning motion actually helps the growth and the life of the turf.
Okay, all right, thank you. Consent for that one? Thank you. And under police, we have a 60-month lease for Enterprise for Dodge Charger, what else? Anything? Nope, that's just the other.
This is basically a replacement for the one that was wrecked in the church.
The one that was wrecked, okay. Hey, see anything about that one? There you are, I knew, I saw you somewhere. Okay, consent for that one? And then we have a mechanical services agreement with Brisbane, didn't we just have one? How are we revising this?
You had one from City Hall, this is the police department.
But didn't we do one prior to City Halls? I thought we had done one recently for?
Utility Department.
Ah, that's what it was. Brisbane's getting some business from us.
And they are trying to group them all together for the upcoming February, March.
So this will be a timing thing?
They're going to, they're going to work on timing this coming year.
Good deal, all right. Consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. And then under utilities, Mr. Kemp, anything in particular you want to highlight for us? Oh, well, we do need to highlight the first one.
Yeah.
So talk, talk about that one, that's Award Six matter.
Right, we had, we discovered a failed sewer line across the main street over in the northwest part of the city, and we immediately sprung to action, had to purchase some material that could be, that could be delivered the following day, and talked to the mayor, got that delivered, I believe it was last Wednesday, and by the, that Friday, we had to work committed in this sewer line stabilized, so this is to purchase some of the material that was needed to make the preparations.
And what had happened was, is banks had eroded, and so it exposed that line and compromised it, so we had to extend the steel casing, right?
Yes, and we had a lot of trees and things that were, that were all there for the clearing, causing, causing that erosion.
Yeah, so mitigated that, and also solved the steel problem, so. Do we need to do anything differently? It's expressed, if it's expressed on the agenda as an emergency authorization, that covers us in terms of, okay, all right, the record?
Well, included on the cover sheet, too.
Okay, consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. Sole source quote for provider of, what is this, six Ethernet gatekeepers, these are more, more gatekeepers?
More gatekeepers, and these will be located directly on 105, instead of having a cellular base communication, so about a year lead time for these, if we want to go ahead and get, these and the hopper, and two of these are going to be located on hopper money to replace some existing gatekeepers with that fiber project.
All right, consent for that one? They're, they're not cheap either, are they? $4,600.
They're, they're cheaper than the cellular, though, that's, that's, they're close to $6,000.
And more reliable, and more.
The hopper will be much more reliable.
Okay.
Until it's cut, until the line's cut.
All right, Kim Pro, we have herbicide spraying, and this is to include additional areas?
Yeah, electric-related areas, substations, some head and out transformers areas where we don't want any vegetation thrown, just to add to that existing vendor that does contract.
Okay, okay, herbicide, is herbicide also like Roundup, or is that, it kills as well as, okay, all right, consent, thank you. And then an MOU, and this has to do with our agreement with MSU and the new transmission line that we dealt with last board meeting, correct?
Yeah, just to clarify, is the foundation is the agreement?
Yes, I didn't fulfill my, my speech pattern, MSU Foundation.
It is going to be on MSU property, though, and Burke and I are working with them on easements to provide that new relocation, but yes, the agreement is directly with the foundation, it's one of their LLCs, and there, this is 100% payment by them for all of the work associated with this property.
Okay, so consent for that one?
Consent.
All right, and before I let you go, do you want to talk about your energy workshops one more time?
Sure, happy to.
Just when they are and where they are?
I believe it's.
You got them off the top of your head?
Able to aid through the tent, and we have the different sites and times on our website, we have it on the city website, our social media sites, we're having them at local churches, usually in the evening, we're having sports plays in the Eagle Center, and also reaching out to different groups around the community, so really trying to get the word out without getting a lot of interest and participation, and we're looking forward to it.
Okay, all right, yes, ma'am.
I'd like to backtrack to item four up there, to be sure that I heard that, what you said correctly, you said that the foundation, or the university, one of the two, will be paying for this completely?
100%.
Another MSU-Starkville collaboration there? Another MSU-foundation collaboration?
This is in advance of the work the foundation's doing, primarily on the east side, it's the Pottley 12 there, but it will be 100% paid, that's engineering, design, purchasing materials, and construction, as well as the construction oversight inspection.
Yeah, it's going to be a huge benefit to us as well, to have those electric lines, power lines more consolidated and replaced.
It opens up some area for future development as well, not just the absentee property.
City, yeah, city property, okay, all right, and as long as we're, we're at it, I'll let the Vice Mayor chime in here for a minute, but we've got absentee voting, voting today until 5 o'clock, absentee, absentee voting tomorrow, 8 to 12, and then the locations?
The locations for the absentee voting are as follows, Award One will vote at the Sports Flex, the NS Building, Ward Two will be at the Sports Flex, the Travis Alaw Building, Ward Three, the Sports Flex, the Travis Alaw Building, Ward Four here at City Hall, Ward Five at Fire Station Number One, Ward Six at Fire Station Number Three.
Tell, tell where that is.
Fire Station Number Three is at the intersection of Garrett Road, Highway 3 and Avenue slash North Jackson Street.
North Jackson Street. And Ward 7 is also here in City Hall. We encourage everyone to get out and vote, and Mayor, you mentioned it, to 5:00 p.m. today and in the morning. Saturday morning, Miss Hart's off the open from 8 a.m. to 12 noon. Thank you.
And just for fun, we've had how many? 347 absentee voters? And how is that in terms of past? That's high?
It's higher than usual.
Oh, good. It's nice to have people interested in the election.
And I'm going to go down and vote absentee and pay my parking ticket in a minute, so...
Okay, I'm not... Look, Curtis is...
Curtis is on the job.
He does not discriminate.
He does not.
The cars are open Tuesday from 7 a.m. to 7 p.m.
Okay, all right. That will...
Mayor, I'm going to go pay my parking ticket. You're also putting signage out at the former polling places.
Yes, I'm sorry.
In case anyone shows up at the incorrect place, they'll go to the new place.
Yes, and that will be true of a couple of different locations, so we'll absolutely do that, so...
Sure, yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you for that reminder.
You're welcome.
All right, if there's nothing else, then thank you, everyone. We'll call this work session done. Look forward to seeing everyone at various and sundry events over the weekend and on Tuesday.
Tuesday.